John Hutzco.
Steve Gazwell.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Bob Wilbur.
And if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a few opening items on our agenda before we get to our first official agenda item. We have two upcoming meeting dates, one on December 16th and one on January 6th, 2015. I'm sorry, today's December 16th, that's not helpful. Excuse me. One on January 6th and one on January 20th, forgive me folks. And we have a few sets of minutes to approve, so, let's see, August 5th, we had myself, John, John, Craig, Bob, and Steve here, so do I have a motion to approve the August 5th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And the August 19th meeting, it looks like we have just about everybody here as well, so do I have a motion to approve the August 19th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, let's see, on September, we had myself, John, Craig, Bob, and Steve here, so do I have a motion to, John Cutler?
Yeah.
So I think John Hutzco, you weren't here, so do I have a motion to approve the September 2nd minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And John Hutzco, you abstain? Okay. And our September 16th minutes, we do not have a quorum right now, so I think we'll stop at September 16th, we'll carry those over to January, Pam? Okay, and then the next item on our agenda is the approval of the meeting dates for 2015, so on your agenda, you've got the set of meeting dates, as always, we call out the first November meeting will be Wednesday, November 4th, because of Election Day, so do I have a motion to approve the 2015 Planning Board meeting dates?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry, Mike, come on up. And then, just one more item before we jump into the first decision item, I wanted to take a moment to let everyone know, with regret, we've accepted Russ Smith's retirement from the Board. He joined the Board in 2004 as an alternate member, and he's been a full member of the Board since 2005, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank him for his really excellent service, and we'll definitely miss him, and he's been a great member of the Board for us, so I just wanted to take a minute to thank him for that service, and I know we'll miss him.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Excellent. All right.
Russ is a good guy.
Absolutely, absolutely.
He is a good guy.
Excellent. All right, the first item on our agenda tonight is the Hopewell Animal Hospital amended site plan Route 52, on for a decision. And has anything changed about the site plan, or anything we need to discuss before we offer the negative declaration? Yeah, okay. So I have a negative declaration dated this evening, December 16th, for Hopewell Animal Hospital, this is a redevelopment of an existing lot in the B1 Zone, which will consist of a one-story, 4,973-square-foot veterinary office building and 31 associated parking spaces, with an additional six spaces to be land banked. This was an unlisted action under seeker, and located on 2611 New York State Route 52, we reviewed the short form EAF in making our seeker determination, and we had just, excuse me, we identified the following issues as relevant: stormwater quantity control and pollution prevention, traffic and circulation, threatened and endangered species, visual and aesthetics, and septic disposal and water usage. With the first item, stormwater quantity control and pollution prevention, the proposed parking lot and building are considered to be a combination of new development and redevelopment of the existing site. As a whole, the project will increase the total amount of impervious cover by a relatively small amount of approximately one-third of an acre, and seek to maintain the current drainage patterns to the extent practical. The main discharge currently is and will outlet toward New York State Route 52 right-of-way, and in accordance with the New York State DEC and local regulations, the project does not require a full stormwater pollution prevention plan, or SWIP, since the total area of disturbance is calculated to be well under the one-acre threshold at 0.8 acres. A basic SWIP consisting of a detailed erosion and sediment control plan has been prepared for implementation during construction, and it's noted that the location is within a previously developed parcel within a commercial corridor that is surrounded by other similarly developed properties. The applicant proposes to significantly enhance the site with the landscaped areas and filtering practices in order to improve stormwater runoff quality and quantity, and as such, no significant impact from this project in terms of stormwater pollution is expected. With regard to traffic and circulation, the site will generate some new traffic, although it is not considered significant in comparison with the existing traffic stream on Route 52. In terms of circulation, the Board considered a few alternate layouts before settling for the preferred alternative as put forth by the applicant. Additionally, the proposed site plan seeks to better accommodate pedestrians safely via the provision of sidewalks and associated pedestrian markings and signage. Under the proposed project, vehicular access and egress will be provided by a single entrance from Route 52 and the related signage and striping. During the review, the entrance was shifted slightly in order to align the property with the opposing driveway located across the entrance on Route 52. These aspects will be subject to a review and approval from New York State Department of Transportation. The site plan also outlines internal circulation to accommodate appropriate fire apparatus and refuse vehicles. Accordingly, the project would have no significant adverse impact from traffic or circulation. The third item we identified was threatened and endangered species. The site is a previously developed parcel located within an area that bog turtles have been known to exist and/or migrate. It also resides within less than two and a half miles to known Indiana bat roosts. With regard to the turtles, since the areas that are typical bog turtle habitats such as calcareous fens or fen-like wetlands dominated by sedges were not found on-site, and the site does not contain any clear, slow-moving meadow streams with muddy bottoms, which are favored by the bog turtles, the habitat suitability assessment concluded that bog turtles are not likely to be present on this site, and no further study or mitigation is required. With regard to the Indiana bat, since additional surveys at the site would not rule out the potential presence of Indiana bat at some point during the active season, April 1st to October 30th, the applicant has agreed to remove the small number of trees intended for removal during the winter months between October 31st and March 31st, when the bats are hibernating. In addition, the applicant will employ other standard Indiana bat conservation measures, including downward-facing, full-cut-off lighting, and clear demarcation of trees to be removed versus left behind. Further, per U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services requirements, no chemicals will be utilized in stormwater basins. With the implementation of the above Indiana bat conservation measures, and no further action required for the bog turtles, no significant adverse impacts to either the bog turtles or Indiana bat would be expected from the proposed project. Visual and aesthetics, the next one. The proposed project is located within an established highway business corridor, however, there are some residential properties in close proximity to the site. Therefore, the site plan incorporates several features to reduce the potential for impacts to neighboring properties, including retaining a wooded area, and proposes supplemental landscaping at the rear of the property to visually screen the site and act as a partial noise buffer from the surrounding uses. The proposed lighting plan would be consistent with the Dutchess County Greenway Compact, and the proposed illumination levels would not exceed an average of 2.1-foot candles over the building and parking area, and 0.5-foot candles at the property boundaries. The proposed lighting fixtures will be consistent with LEED goals and Green Globes criteria for light pollution reductions. In addition, the fixtures will be full cutoff and receive shielding in order to further reduce light levels in the direction of the nearby residential properties. The light fixtures will be on timers and will be turned off after hours. As such, no significant visual impacts from this project are expected. And lastly, septic disposal and water usage, in terms of the site operation, it's noted that the proposed water and wastewater generation will increase slightly from the current rate to the estimated usage result from the expansion and use. This flow will be accommodated in a refurbished septic disposal system that is positioned above the local water table. The design and installation will be under the approval of the Dutchess County Department of Health, and in addition, as part of this project, the applicant will provide an enhanced water supply system that will be permitted as a non-community public water supply. As such, no significant impact from this project is expected in this regard, and there were no other significant potential impacts identified as a result of the application process associated with this project. With those items reviewed and assessed, do I have a motion to approve the negative declaration?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, does someone want to offer the resolution?
Sure. Mike?
Resolution of final site plan approval. Name of the site plan, Hopewell Animal Hospital, proposed expansion. Name of the applicant is JKRAS LLC. Location is 216-2611, rather, Route 52. Resolution offered by Planning Board member, Michael O'Brien. Whereas the applicant has applied for a site plan approval to include a second building of 4,687 square feet, whereas the action is considered to be an unlisted action under seeker for which a coordinated review was not undertaken, and whereas the Planning Board conducted public hearings on September 20th, October 21st, and November 18th, 2014, whereas the Planning Board adopted a negative declaration on December 16th, 2014, and whereas the applicant has now submitted a final site plan, the Board determines that such a final site plan meets the town's requirements for final site plan approval, subject to the following conditions set forth below. Are there, are there, there are conditions, okay. Now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Board hereby issues final site plan approval for the above project as represented on a map entitled Hopewell Animal Hospital, prepared by the Chasen Companies Engineers, dated August 29th, 2014, and revised through September 20th, 2014. And be it further resolved that this approval is subject to the following conditions, which must be completed before the plan is signed by the Planning Board Chair. One, modifications set forth in the town engineer's letter September 14th, 2014, there's nothing...
The date is actually September 5th, 2014.
September 5th, 2014, okay. Do you guys have a copy of that?
I believe we do.
Okay. The plot will contain the written approval of the Dutchess County Health Department before it is signed by the chairperson, as well as the approval of the ARB. Three, demarcation of wetlands buffer by boulder fence, landscaping, or other suitable material, and the boundary of the wetlands buffer shall be set forth in the deed for the property of lots, or lots if applicable.
Oh, okay.
Four, landscape plan to be approved by AKRF. Five, approval of final SWIP by town engineer. Is there a number six?
I have a couple of items. Well, number four, maybe that should read landscape and lighting plan for review, since the lighting plan is going to require the restrictions for the Indiana bat. I just want to double-check some of those. And number five, it's, the project's small enough where it needs the basic SWIP rather than the final SWIP.
Okay.
So that can just be changed to basic SWIP.
Okay.
I have a couple of other items. Some of these are already in the letter from our office, but if we wanted to spell it out here, the floodplain development permit, that's something that they're going to require to apply with the Building Department. Highway work permit from DOT, that was mentioned in the next deck.
Joe, is that a condition then of prior to signature, or is that prior to building permit?
The condition, I think we get word to say it'll be applied for with the building permit. Scott, would you say the floodplain permit? He's thinking about it right now. But the highway work permit is another item that's mentioned.
I think the Queen's Assistant, just to get it done as a condition of...
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, Joe, a floodplain development permit and a highway work permit?
Yeah, those should probably be two separate things.
Okay.
And then we also...
The work permits from DOT.
Yeah, DOT work permits.
Have you applied for that yet?
No.
That's going to be a long way down the road.
What's that? It depends. So we're going to require that prior to signature?
Normally, it's done that way, unless they see a reason, or at least get a letter from DOT saying they're approving the entrance and...
We can get a conceptual, I don't know, should we?
But then follow up with the work permit.
Okay, and the floodplain development permit, is that through the Building Department, Scott, or is that...
No.
And we would have that again prior to the signing of the map, you'd want that, what, applied for?
In this case, because we're going to have time to get it.
Would you actually issue the, to be issued? Okay. So a floodplain development permit from the Building Department will be required prior, will be required, I think, because the condition already says prior to signing the map, and a highway work permit from the Department of Transportation will be required.
Are those in the letter of September 5th?
We had the, yeah, we had the work permit in there, the Health Department approval and the floodplain permit, they were all, they were already in our letter of September 5th, so I'm just expounding on that.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to double-dip like that, but it seems to be...
So if we're calling out the Department of Health, we might as well list the other permits, that's fine.
Okay, anything else?
Any other changes, Michelle, Scott, Tom?
I think the, sorry, the inspection fee is something we normally have as well in the condition, and that normally gets determined based on the value of the site work. We don't usually have the number the day of the approval, but it's something we work out as we get closer to signing a plan.
Okay, Tom, what's our normal language then for inspection?
Normally, we don't put it that way, the statute provides for both inspection.
Okay. Just so the applicant's aware that there is an inspection fee that would go along with site work and the building. Any other changes, conditions? Most of the dates are okay, I think? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Be it further resolved that within five business days, the adoption of this resolution, a chair or other duly authorized member of the Planning Board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by John Cutler, and votes as follows. John Hutzco?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
John Cutler?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Bob? Oh, I'm sorry.
Steve?
Forgive me. Steve?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the motion carries.
I'll build it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thanks.
All right, the next item on our agenda is an amendment of resolution request for Jackson Corners on Townsend Road. And I think we have a letter in our package tonight with the request.
Yeah, I believe, last time we were in front of the Board, we talked about moving forward with the water main installation along Townsend Road up to the subdivision, and actually into the subdivision toward the cul-de-sac, that's been completed. We're looking to test that water main in the near future. And then the second aspect of it was having the ability to go on there and install some of the drainage structures. It's a small cul-de-sac, it's 250 feet in length, so basically, we're looking at two catch basins toward the end of the cul-de-sac, and then some manholes, and some small diameter plastic piping down toward the easterly sediment trap. We're looking for permission to go ahead and initiate that aspect of construction. And I think the last time we were in front of the Board, we gave an update to the Board of Health. Our final submission for the subsurface disposal systems were made, and did a comprehensive, full submission to that department. It's in the pile, it's in the queue with the Health Department, and we're actually, to give you an overview of where we're at with the subdivision itself, we're looking to submit for final approval for the subdivision toward the end of this month. The applicant does have a couple interested.
This month, December.
Are you done, are you done removing material?
Material's been done and removed and brought to final grade. I believe it ended May, June of this year, and there's been some general shaping of the site, but material removal across property line's been completed.
Tom, so I think what we had wanted to do, Tom, I don't know if we had the time, but we wanted to do the amendment of the resolution, because what we did last time, when we removed the condition for no construction prior to signing the maps, we did an amended resolution, so we wanted to look at that again.
Because the language originally stated that you couldn't do anything.
Correct, so then we...
Looking to amend that to allow some of the infrastructure, the water and the storm range.
Right, so we have the original preliminary resolution restricted, sorry, bear with me with the dates, the 21st of July, 2010, we restricted all construction on-site. We amended the resolution in 2013, I believe, no, 27th day of December, 2011, to allow some construction to occur on the site. So what we're looking to do is make a second amendment to allow some of the additional construction, as Brian just outlined. Brian, you want to install about a, was it 250-foot water main?
I believe the entire expansion from where it currently existed to the end of the cul-de-sac was, let's say, 475 feet.
Okay. So water main expansion and then install, and I'm sorry, just sort of two catch basins?
Any, let's say, let's put it this way, any drainage improvements associated with the infrastructure of the road, which is basically shakes down to two catch basins, two manholes, and some small diameter plastic pipe.
And you're thinking it's going to improve the marketability of the site?
They already have two very interested people, the two lots toward the cul-de-sac, and they're looking to break ground ASAP, and that's the reasoning for us submitting for final officially toward the end of this month.
Okay.
So we're still currently in preliminary approval, you have some continued restrictions on what you can do, obviously because you're in preliminary approval. Scott, any concerns over what the applicant is requesting as far as extending?
The only thing that kind of came up at a site meeting was the contours of the cul-de-sac. I know we met with the Highway Super, right, Brian? And we looked at that. Did you look at making any tweaks to that, or?
The Highway Super satisfied. The discussion that we had was, rather than having it sheet-flow uniformly across the cul-de-sac, was to pitch it toward the curb line, toward the basin, so there wasn't sheet-flow across the cul-de-sac.
So many of the drainage that you are going to install, incorporate that, does that have to be modified in any way to incorporate that?
I think what we agreed on in the field was we were going to lower the catch basins about three to four inches to allow that expanded.
Okay, and where does it apply, a little minor field adjustment, based on the Highway Super?
Yep, and that will be reflected in the final's approval submission that we make.
Okay. So just to incorporate comments made by the Highway Super in their final upgrade?
As a condition of allowing the additional construction? Okay.
We don't like that, so we don't crack.
Okay. Was that ever, was that written out, or were those verbal comments?
We don't have written comments, though, do we?
What's that?
That was, sorry, exactly.
Well, I think in their ass bill, they'll make the adjustment in their ass bill.
Say, I'm sorry, say it one more time.
They'll make the adjustment in their ass bill, when they submit their ass bill.
Okay, but do we have the, do we have written comments, like a Highway Department letter or something that tells us what?
No, it was just discussed out in the field.
There was notes taken at a pre-construction meeting that we had on field, they're handwritten notes that I took during the meeting.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just making notes, bear with me. Other than that's got no concern with the continuation, okay. Is there any other drawings or anything else we need in order to allow these two things to happen, or are we comfortable we've got?
No.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions for Scott or the applicant? Okay, make sure I say this correctly, please. Do I have a motion to allow the expansion of the water main and install any remaining drainage improvements with the, required for the installation of the road for the Jackson Corners subdivision on Townsend Road, with the condition that with the request for final approval, we will incorporate any Highway Department comments made during a site visit?
So moved.
Do we, do we have, do we have to say anything about water testing at all? Or you get, is that part of testing the mains?
That's part of the, that's part of the information, that's within standard Board Health approval.
Yeah, they will get their certificate of completion until a lot of steps come, so...
All right, but does that happen now, when you expand that?
We, yeah, we did have a WSA expansion of the district, and that goes back to 2011.
But they won't be allowed by Board Health to put that main in service until they pass all the pressure testing.
Right.
So that's part of that protocol.
But does the pressure test happen now, that's what I'm saying? With this resolution, does it happen now?
No, pipes not. No, it's not in yet, but it's...
They have to put the pipe in and then test it.
Okay.
Yeah, but I don't believe you need to get into that detail in the resolution.
The pipe's in your...
I'm just asking, that's all.
No, the pipe's in the original plan.
Yes, I understand. Okay.
Comfortable?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I had a motion, and I believe I had a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Tom, do we need to document this in a written, that next time we're refined within minutes?
Forty-four minutes, we'll attach that to the resolution.
Okay. Then the next item on our agenda is also an amendment of resolution for Hunter's Ridge on Devon Farms Road.
Yep, and at the last meeting, we were here in front of the Board, it's an eight-lot subdivision, eight residential homes associated with Phase 2 of the Hunter's Ridge subdivision. And we've been coming before the Board to seek extensions of approval for quite a number of years here, and based upon some of the market interest out there, and trying to drive some more visibility on the site, the applicant has asked permission from the Board to have the ability to go on there and clear some of the trees that are associated with the improvements for the drainage and the roadway on-site. And then, we talked to Scott at the last meeting about establishing a reclamation bond, in case we go in there and we do some light grading to establish the final grade of the road, possibly do a dirt access, or gravel-based stabilized access up into the cul-de-sac, and that way, we can give indications of where lots could be, potential home sites, and maybe even do some marking, you know, future lot number two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, just to gear some interest up there. And we had a meeting with Scott, we came up with a number that could be secured either by cash or by a letter of credit. Again, we're here tonight asking permission from the Board to amend the resolution to allow us to do some minor construction prior to the filing of the map.
So you're no longer looking to change any of that? I know you came in the last time.
Yeah, Mike, but last time they came in, they wanted to actually start the road, start the infrastructure, and they were asking permission to do that, and then, you know, we had a discussion afterwards and what they really want to try to accomplish.
All right, you know what, I wasn't, I must not have been here for the very last meeting, so...
Okay, so rather than do, to really create all that disturbance and try to get a road paved and all that, especially this time of year, they just really want to get visibility to the site?
Sure.
So people can really physically see where their lot's going to be, so I think a good compromise, especially this time of year, is just to go in with a minimal amount of disturbance, get a gravel base in that grave to allow them to show the property, and also, you know, minimize the disturbance, and 50,000 would be more than enough to, you know, restore it in case they don't look for it.
Right.
You know, Jason was referring to when you came in wanting to modify the driveways.
Right, that goes...
That's along the...
No, that's not, that's not fair.
Right, that was when we were looking, that's originally when Gregor Holmes was involved in possibly picking it up, but this is now the applicant himself who owns the piece of property. And what we did too is we submitted a plan to you guys that basically shows our intent on what we wanted to do, so the way we'd like to pitch this to the Board is, we're still getting numbers back from potential excavators in the area to go ahead and do some light grading and establish that gravel accessway up to the cul-de-sac area. Still waiting on some numbers, obviously the weather is kind of cooperating right now, so what we'd like to do is have the ability to, prior to any physical ground disturbance post the bond, that Scott is requesting, either cash or a letter of credit, we're currently trying to seek a letter of credit, it does take some time to secure that. The applicant has been talking to Rand Court, they have the ability to get on-site relatively soon to just clear, and that's what the applicant was kind of leaning toward right now, let's have the ability to go on there and just clear, let's not stump, let's not disturb the ground, but have the ability to go in there and at least stump short-term, because the weather is kind of currently cooperating with us. And then prior to any type of shovel hitting the ground, any kind of land disturbance with a heavy machinery, that the bond gets posted, either cash or a letter of credit. So we look, we were looking to have that little bit of flexibility, and that's kind of changed since when Scott and I talked, but we fully intend to post that bond before any... before any type of physical ground disturbance. I don't know how the board would react to that request.
There is going to be some ground disturbance with the logging.
When Rand Court goes in there, what, what's going to happen is they're going to, Rand Court's going to access where my driveway currently is, and they're going to come up and around and down in. So the first hundred foot of my driveway is paved with binder, so they will have the ability to at least keep any kind of tracking off Devon Farms Road. If there's any tracking, obviously we would sweep it, but at least have the ability to go in there and just clear, not stump, for right now. Because there seems to be a window of opportunity with Rand Court and their scheduling, but obviously prior to any kind of grading, that bond will be posted.
Okay.
Is the bond definitely, is there a chance that the bond won't be posted?
Bond will be posted.
It will be posted?
Right. Right now, we're looking, there's two avenues. There's, there's obviously putting of cash, and there's securing a letter of credit with the town. Obviously throwing out $50,000 of cash, we try to look for another avenue possibly, and we're expanding that right now.
No, I understand.
And we're also getting some, some numbers in, in the meantime from different excavators on pricing, on what it's going to take to actually do the work. But the ultimate intent is to move this subdivision forward and, short-term, try to gain some, some marketability and some, some visual presence of what could be there.
Being that this is new, I'd just like to ask, what does clearing the trees gain?
If we talk to different realtors, some realtors say, if we could just get up there, we can walk up there and we can show the people where the potential cul-de-sac is going to be, and you can mark out where lots are, maybe you don't have to go ahead and, and do the actual land, land clearing and grading right now, you can wait till the spring.
Is it so thick that you got like briar bushes and things like that? Is it like that?
You know what it is? It's, it's, it's heavily overgrown with a lot of mines.
So you want to just go in there with a brush hog? Because I don't know what cutting trees-
It's too, it's actually too big for a brush hog. We're probably talking about between eight-inch trees, 12-inch trees, there's some larger diameter tulip trees. But we're just looking for that flexibility. If it's not there, then obviously, you know, we came up with an agreement originally at the table, but we're just looking for that window that Rand Court currently has, and the weather seems to be on our side.
Any concerns, Scott? We have a letter in our package just tonight dated December 2nd that kind of outlines what Brian is saying reflects the 50,000 bond, that it's just going to be a construction entrance about 100 feet into the parcel with a temporary gate and a temporary sediment and erosion control details. And I know, are those to be provided, or have you already provided those?
That is the ultimate intent, that's, let's say, a worst case. If we have the ability to go in there and just clear the trees, not stump, and we can get interest with two, even two buyers that are willing to say, hey, we like it up here, we'd like to set up a contract, like to work a deal with you, that would be enough for the applicant to go full bore with road construction, we'd be back in front of the board, we'd be filing the map sooner than later. So it was, if the trees gain us something, great, if not, we're going to move forward with, with doing the, the rough grading and the establishment of the gravel driveway, that's all.
So how would you not stump it and establish the gravel driveway? I guess I'm confused.
Wouldn't.
We, I wouldn't establish the gravel driveway.
Okay.
I would just clear it, keep the stumps, minimal ground disturbance.
I think what you're asking for is going to cut the trees away the road, and then if they do nothing else, that's it.
That's it.
Then-
With no bond?
With no bond, and then the next step would be they would put up a bond, and then they would stump and take out and put the gravel or whatever.
I'm good with that. Thank you for clarification, because I wasn't sure what we were talking about.
Yeah, the letter doesn't, the letter doesn't seem to say-
No, I understand what we're talking about, I'm just wondering if-
But that's not, that's not what the letter says, and if we're going to make a motion to amend the resolution, I think we need to be very clear.
Right, and, and the reason why the letter reflects that is we were getting some initial numbers from various contractors, and the numbers were coming back higher than we anticipated, and we're like, all right, let's, let's take a look here. And talking to some realtors, they're like, maybe you just can just, just clear it, and that's enough for us to walk up in there if there's not two feet of snow, which we don't have currently, and give a potential buyer a, a visual presence of where a house site could be.
So do you want both alternatives, or are you just asking to go in and do the clearing without stumping?
I'd like to have both alternatives.
Okay.
And I think the worst case is covered with the bond, and that being posted prior to ground disturbance.
Okay. So Scott, do you have a copy of the letter? Are you comfortable with what would be here if the bond is issued and what would be permitted?
Well, I'm comfortable with, with this scenario. This is a, this is a new scenario. I think that going in with the heavy equipment to, even just to clear is going to, I'll take a shot, say and require a construction entrance, you know, with the skitters and et cetera going in and out, so at the very least, there's going to have to be a construction entrance and some, and some erosion control with that. And then, you know, we wouldn't have-
Well, that's my point, you're going to have disturbance regardless. That was my point before, you're going to have disturbance.
Well, I'm more concerned we're like right at the road, just in and out.
Well, it's coming off of his driveway.
Right, they're going to access mine.
By the time he gets to the road, it's-
That's your driveway?
Yeah, that's, that, my feeling was, let them come up-
Actually, isn't your driveway part of the road?
Eventually, I'm going to be abandoning my driveway, filling and tying into the new subdivision.
Yeah.
So that was my thoughts, hey, you guys can get up in my driveway, I have, I'm 100-foot paved, and then I transition an item for gravel. And there's staging area, it could actually be past my blacktop area. If we need to put a construction entrance there for a staging area, I'm fine.
So it's on him if he has crap all over his driveway.
Do we need to require a bond for that?
You want to do a partial bond? We can post, we post, all right, partial bond?
Okay.
Christmas miracle.
Do we have a dollar amount, Scott?
Is that tied around?
Done?
But I don't want you coming back here complaining about what's happened to your driveway.
That's all right, I know where he lives.
Who approved this to my driveway?
All right, so let me make sure I have this right. Do I have a motion to allow the Hunter's Ridge project applicant two options? The first option would be some limited clearing, again, up to the 100 feet without stumping, but with whatever clearing and erosion control is needed, with a $10,000 bond? Or a second option, that would be a $50,000 bond to allow the clearing and installation up to the, again, the 100-foot entrance into the parcel and including up to, is it gravel? Permanent drainage? Do you want to bring in the gravel too? Is that what, I'm just trying to catch the conditions in the letter.
The, the second option would be the full establishment of the rough grade and the gravel-
All the way up to the cul-de-sac.
Right.
Okay, does it say that in the letter? I just want to make sure the letter-
Yeah, it does.
Okay, so the second option would be following the guidelines of what's proposed in the December 2nd letter from the applicant, including the $50,000 bond. So first option, $10,000 bond, and allow rough cut, no stumping for the 100-foot entrance, and the second option would be in accordance with the letter from the applicant proposed on December 2nd with a $50,000 bond.
But we're making those options, aren't you going to do that?
The, the intent- The intent in both circumstances is to clear the trees all the way up into the cul-de-sac.
But I mean, if you get this first part, does that mean you're not going to do the second option?
He's not sure whether he's going to do the second.
Option one, let's do something tomorrow.
No, no, he was just sitting there saying they're waiting for their, their, uh, letter of credit. For 50,000, which then you would do option two. Are you definitely going to do that?
When you're going to do it?
So option one lets him get started.
Yes, I understand.
Sir, I'm sorry, we just, we need you to come up to the mic, because we're having a hard time hearing you.
Doing the second phase is, I don't think, going to give me any more marketability than the first phase. If they see no trees down, whether it's graded to grade, I don't think they're going to realize, you'll know where the lots are, and they might get potential, you know, prospects in that, in that way. But I, I'll probably wind up doing the second phase, and hopefully when it's a little clearer the weather, March, April, and then we'll find it. I still haven't even gotten prices from the excavator. The tree guy I did, he's ready to go. The excavators, who tell me they're not busy, but I haven't gotten anything from them. It could be another month, and I'd rather get it in as soon as possible, like I said, it's, if I can get anything marketed with the first phase.
Okay. So if, if we aren't presenting as options, I can say allow two phases. First phase, $10,000 bond to allow the cutting of the trees, no stumping, and the second phase, the $50,000 bond, and up to and including the, the description in the letter of the improvements you wish to make.
Do they have to come back to us for the first, second phase, or no?
As long as the building department is comfortable with monitoring that, I'm not sure they would need to come back to the planning board, I'm looking at you, Scott, because-
As long as they come back to, to building and engineering and give us-
What they're doing, yeah.
48-hour notice or something.
Well, you're going to have to post, they're going to have to post the bond, too, or they're going to have to increase the-
Well, yeah, you're going to know then.
Yeah.
All right, and I would, I would issue a letter saying, hey, this is where we're at, we're going to post a bond, give you a notice, give the building department a notice.
Okay.
Do it in letter format.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve a, a small, short phase, initial phase of construction, $10,000 bond for the initial cutting of the trees up to the 100 feet to the cul-de-sac, and the second phase with the $50,000 bond is outlined in the letter of December 2nd from the applicant?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, let me make one quick clarification. This is a modification of the resolution of final site plan approval. And all still approved?
Approved, aye.
As amended.
But I just want to ask a question, are you removing what you cut tops and chunks, everything, you're removing everything from the site as well, what you plan to do?
I like to keep some for myself.
What's the plan, is Rand Court going to-
He's going to, he's going to clear and trip, and I'm going to keep a couple logs on the side.
Do you need us to amend what we just approved?
No, I just want to clear.
I'm asking, I mean, this is our moment, so, okay.
Well, what is, you're going to, you're going to clear the stuff from the site?
Yeah, that's a deal.
We're in amending mood.
Rather than leaving a mess.
Take advantage of it, we're in an amending mood.
The object is to make it nice and pretty and shangri-la.
Okay.
Hereafter, I'd like you to refer to the second option as the full monty, okay?
Full monty.
You got it.
That'll be the title of my letter.
Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a walk-in item, I think, Chris, if we can have you come on up. We have, and Scott, I'm just looking, do we have a, do we have a letter from Ortho Associates? I think we do. This, thank you.
You just have one of the two letters, there's another letter about the fill.
Yeah, so, so this, this first letter was an acknowledgement by the applicant Ortho Associates, Orthopedic Associates, saying that they realize they're proceeding with construction, but we do not have a signed map filed yet, and they don't have their Board of Health approval. And now we also have another issue to discuss tonight, so Chris, I'll go ahead and let you kind of describe to us what's going on with your grading plan and where we are right now, and then we can walk through it as the board.
Yeah, when we had applied for approval, we had an oversight in our office, which we didn't catch the town requirement for a, anytime you bring in over 375 yards of fill, you need a fill permit from the planning board as well. So we did some calculations, and we determined that our site requires 1,265 cubic yards of fill to bring it up to grade, just based upon the code does not include structural fill or fill for a septic system. So we're here tonight seeking approval for the 1,265 yards of fill to bring into the site to accommodate construction.
So that requires a special permit per our code?
Correct.
I'm sorry, this is for the, as I recall, you were putting the tank, it's going to be elevated in the back?
Yes.
It's not like you're changing the elevation of the rest of the site.
We are bringing up the, the driveway on the site by about a foot and a half to two feet across from where it is, and also the building we're bringing up. We have a low groundwater table on the site, and we're trying to bring up the site to accommodate the storm drainage that we're putting in the bar retention area, and also to raise the septic area.
But none of that's changed?
None of that's changed.
That's the way it was since, yeah. They just forgot to say that they needed to bring fill in.
I forgot to ask for a fill permit based upon a plan you approved.
Okay. Good catch.
Are there any, are there any other changes to the plan as it was approved? I realize the maps are not signed yet, but you-
Yeah, we, the, the hiccup is the Board of Health, particularly, we are connecting to the, the goal is to connect to the town water line that crosses our site, and we are working through those issues with the Board of Health. We've, I think with the exception of providing you a copy of the maintenance agreements, I understand the attorney had spoken to you today, those are the two only outstanding items that we haven't provided to town.
Okay.
So the, the amount of fill was shown in the plan was approved by the board?
Yeah, we haven't changed any of the grading, it's just that we neglected to ask for the fill permit.
So I, I think then we're really just doing a non-pro town correction of your original resolution and didn't grant that permit, that was your-
But we didn't advertise a special permit, Tom.
But the materials and everything were all disclosed, the plans, it was all there for review, so I can go either way.
You are a lawyer.
The other day, you finished, my mistake came down to finish-
No, exactly. Yeah, nothing's changed.
We discussed it earlier, I, I wasn't too sure about the fill, whether it was new fill or a recalculation, but apparently this fill has always been calculated on the site, the elevations will always be the same.
So, so, all right, Joe, do you agree with that, that we had this information and we have it today in our files showing that, that amount of fill needed?
Yeah, we didn't have the numbers, but it, it was, you know, nothing's really changed from what-
The grading's there, it doesn't have a number.
And I think it was talked about in some of the meetings, but we didn't have a specific number because the building was shifting location and-
The, the grading plan that you approved in September has not changed.
Okay.
It just doesn't state that they need to bring in fill.
It didn't state that we needed 1,265 yards of fill.
I'm trying to think if it would have changed the public hearing, because again, there was concern about runoff.
Is there any place on the site that you can get the fill?
But at the token, it was stated that the septic system was going to be a buildup in the back.
Yeah.
But this, the septic is exempt from events.
Correct.
This is the park.
This is for the, right, for the tank and the park.
You don't need a permit to bring a material for a septic. Right.
So, so wait.
Need site plan approval.
So, but wait, so the calculation?
Septic material exempts-
Septic material.
Is exempted from 1,275.
Septic material was exempted from the permit. The town board recently amended the permit to exempt the material from the building.
So that's not included in the number?
That's not included, so this is part of the law.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty much right now, when you come to the site, it just drops down.
So Tom, knowing that the drawings were correct, the intent of the plan was correct, but that we did not have documentation of the amount of fill available to the public during our public hearing process, does that change your mind about whether or not we need to put this through public hearing or can make a correction? I can't tell what you're, whether you're saying no.
No, or no.